Good evening and welcome to the May 23 meeting of the Town Council. If you'd kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Town offices will be closed on Monday, the 27th, in observance of Memorial Day. We are grateful for the brave men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice for the freedom of our nation. Tonight, one of our announcements is Barbara Healy's last meeting, and she decided to head south to Florida, wrong time of year, but I know she'll be looking forward to it. But we'd like to...
Is that true of this? And thank you for...
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We're gonna miss you. Tom's gonna miss you.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with all of you and the council members who were there when I first joined the council in 2018. So I just want to say thank you for that opportunity, and I'm sad to go, so.
May I say something? I just wanted to say thank you for volunteering. The citizens of Merrimack, thank you for your years. You started in 2018, when you were appointed after Jackie Flood resigned, and then you were elected in 2019 and re-elected in 2022. So clearly, the citizens validated our appointment. It was nice to know. But basically, we wish you the best. It is bittersweet. We are happy for you in what your future is, and come January, when we're freezing our butts off in here, especially Mackenzie. She's cold now, believe it or not. We will be thinking of you, and you could be thinking of us, and you'll probably send us a text saying,
I probably will.
Yes, we're having a cocktail at the veranda one year. I hear you're gonna get a storm soon, but we wish you the best.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Barb, I just want to extend my special thanks to you for all that you've done to bring to the council the different thoughts and different ideas, your agreements and disagreements on various things. You've brought another viewpoint, which has been appreciated. And I especially appreciate the effort that you've put out to take the Planning Board seat as a Town Council. We're up and to work with them and deal with those issues. And we'll miss you. Look forward to the future, but we hope you do well down in Florida.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So as a councillor, obviously, I've enjoyed working with you. But from a personal level, when I was interested in joining the council, you're the one that stepped forward and kind of guided me through the process and gave me some very good advice. So on a very personal level, thank you very much for everything you've done and wish you and Bob the best in sunny Florida.
Thank you.
So that, of course, puts us in the unavailable position of having to do interviews, which leads me to remind the town that we're seeking applicants interested in serving on the Town Council until the vote of April of '25. And in order to fill the vacancy that's left, we'll be doing this interview. And if you are... Oh, gosh, I thought I had the date here. What is the deadline for your letters of interest?
June 7th is the letters of interest. Interviews will be not July, June 11th and 12th.
11th and 12th, okay. Thank you, Paul. I thought I had them written down here, but I didn't. So if you'd like that, just send in your interest letter to the Town Manager's office, and you'll be gotten in touch with. All right, the last things I have are we have on June 13th, we have a regular meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room at 7:00 PM. Then Wednesday, June 19th, from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM, we have our council retreat and goal session, which we're gonna have that. Again, at Buckley's...
Great Stakes.
Yeah, Great Stakes, the room.
Carriage House.
The Carriage House, located 438 DW Highway. And lastly, Thursday, June 27th, we have another regular council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Summer concerts at Abbey Griffin Park will be starting up the season on Wednesday, June 19th at 6:00 PM. Concerts are held on Wednesday nights and will run through August 21st. Each week of the series offers a wide variety of musical styles, so everyone's invited to come join us for a fun night of music with the entire family at Abbey Griffin Park. On Monday, May 27th, Memorial Day services will be conducted at Last Rest Services at 11:00 AM. Public service announcement. As the weather gets warmer and with summer quickly approaching, please pay close attention and use caution while driving as we share the roads with motorcycles, cyclists, and walkers. And finally, I want to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day and be a safe weekend ahead. And Barbara, I'm gonna miss being on my toes when I see your emails. Because I know you gotta ask me a question, I gotta stay on my toes. So we will miss you. The ladies in my office are gonna miss you. And we wish you and Bob a healthy and lengthy retirement in Florida. And don't worry, I hope you have a couch or two, because I think some of my staff want to come down and visit.
Not a problem. Thank you.
All right, next is comments from the present public. If you would like to address the council, you can feel free to sit at the table here or step to the mic.
This is the signing folder.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll get that. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements under appointments. Per Merrimack Charter, Article 6, Section 6, at least annually, there should be a review with the Planning Board. This agenda item is to highlight the Board's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. And this evening, we have Bob Best, who came in looking like he had a great ride here.
And he timing is everything.
Just in time, right?
Perfect. It was perfect timing.
Don't want to be early. Good evening, members of the council. Bob Best, Chair of the Planning Board. Good to see you again. I don't know how many years in a row this is.
Probably ten.
I am always amazed when I get to come here, sort of add up the number of years that I've been here, but to realize that between me and Nelson, there's basically been nobody to come before the council for fifty-ish years. And every plan, every site plan, every subdivision in town has one of the two of our signatures on it for the last fifty-ish years, which is about as long as there has been planning and zoning in New Hampshire. So long heritage and certainly an elite club to be one of the two. Thank you for the chance to be here. Let's see, what's new this year? We have a full board, full members of boards. I think there's a couple of appointments pending with you guys that will move some people around and change some slots. But full membership and a full panel of alternates with Halim Madori beginning his first term as the Vice Chair this year. Lynn had been the Vice Chair for a little while since Paul resigned from the board. And then, obviously, before that, it was Alister Milneshood was the Vice Chair. So Halim is beginning his first term, and I think just this week got his chance to chair his first meeting. So I hope he did well. I didn't hear any disasters. Barbara, were you there? Did you do okay?
We did fine.
Good. Good. One of the people that's joining our board soon as an alternate, hopefully, I think with your appointment, unless you guys have already made it, is John Manuelli, which is a great addition to the board because he's our former Fire Marshal and understands the building code inside and outside and has been tuned in with what's going on in the town forever. And so what a fabulous addition to the board. I'm really pleased that he wants to volunteer and be involved in things. He mentioned after his retirement that he went home and watched us on TV a few times and realized he felt disconnected from town and needed to get back involved.
He said he missed it, yeah.
Yeah, missed it, so had to get back involved. So I have some notes that the staff provided me on some of the more significant projects in town. And the ones that are listed here are certainly the significant ones more recently in our meetings. As it happens, the notes they gave me, instead of being from last year at this time, it starts from January till now. So kind of skipped the June through December in their notes, but that's okay. So these notes say that we've had eight meetings so far this year, which is correct for 2024. There's probably another 10 meetings or so from last year. I think we do about 20 a year. There's some months where we only do one per month, like December and November with Thanksgiving, and 4th of July usually clips off one of the ones in July. But it's been pretty consistent with two per month for most months, and then sometimes just one. A steady flow of projects with a lot of interesting ones going on. Some of the ones that are outlined here by the staff is the Flatley Companies project over next to Gilbert Crossing, where they've got that commercial development, and they asked for a modification of that to put their first tenant in there before they do some of the site improvements they have to do for offsite. I haven't seen the tenant quite busy yet, all of their signs up, but looking forward to them getting their offsite improvements done so that can get occupied and they can get on with their next building. Let's see, there's a 7,650-square-foot manufacturing building with office space that's to be located on Turbine Way, which is over by the river. And that is a project that has redeveloped a site that we were taught by our applicant, had been developed in the 1940s and '30s even for the industrial site over there. And I think one of the benefits to that project is that they're doing a little bit of drainage work. We wanted a little bit more, but they're doing a little bit of drainage work there that hadn't been done ever before. So whatever had occurred on that site before had just flowed into the river with whatever rainwater that came off of it. So as to their improvements, they're managing that the correct way, and it's better than the situation that had been there. Let's see. There are three active cases that are currently before the board and had been moved from the last meeting to the next meeting. Strategic acquisitions and real estate holdings had a waiver of full site plan review to change the use to a contractor's yard at 658 Daniel Webster Highway. The development at the bottom of the hill at the Outlet Mall is before us for its apartment building approval. And CA property acquisitions and BTC Realty review for acceptance at approval of a one-story, 8,400-square-foot veterinary clinic in Kennel, also located on Herrick Street. We have also had zoning ordinance amendments and review by the Town of Merrimack of a cell tower up on Wilson Hill Road that is in connection with the Police and Fire Department and will improve the communications for the Fire Department. So we saw a presentation from them. That's kind of the highlights of what we've done for the past year. We've always got a workshop or two in the mix for tweaking the zoning ordinance or the site plan regulations at some point. And probably the biggest effort is one you guys are well aware of, because you decide the funding of it, and that's getting our master plan process going. And I think so that'll start whenever the beginning of the next fiscal year starts and some of that funding is available. And my plan, as it was last time, is to begin with selection of the consultant that can help us and sort of interviewing some candidates to figure out who the best might be. The company that helped us last time has kind of rearranged itself into different pieces, and people have gone their separate ways. So it was last time, it was VHB Consultants from Nashua. And I think Gordon has gone on and left there to go two different other things, and the parts are all moved over. So I don't know who we are consultant this time around, but we'll see how that goes. That's all I have for an update. I have a whole lot else to say. If you have questions of me, I'm glad to answer them.
Well, I think I could say we really appreciate what you're doing, and I do recognize the number of years that the two of you have put forward, and I'm thankful for that. But did anybody have anything of Bob this evening?
You're gonna have Tom back for a while.
What's that?
You're gonna have Tom back for a while.
Excellent. Well, I look forward to that. Tom's always been a great member of the board with great input in the discussions and conversations, so. But literally, all of you have that have served with us at any time, have been a great part of the... We're certainly gonna miss Barbara as well. I heard the comment from Paul, and Barbara shared her news with us a little bit earlier. And definitely will be missed as a member of the board and brings great insight and is fun to be part of the team that we're working with. So good luck in Florida. Have a lot of fun. Definitely gonna miss you. I think the only thing that's always on my mind when I go through that narrative of how long I've done what I've done, and Nelson before that, is I think that there is value, once in a while, to changes in leadership and shaking things up and things like that. But as much as I say that to our Planning Board, they keep re-electing me as the Chair. It is not an unprivileged to do that, and I'm humbled by their...
It is a big position, and you know, the people on the Planning Board, I find it to be a very good Planning Board there, because there were some years ago that it was a little more awkward, but they're very, I guess, professional. They're not professionals necessarily, but they're... And what the work they perform is done very professionally, and I appreciate that. And the leadership of that board is critical to making sure things are done timely and accurately. So we appreciate it, Paul.
I would also be remiss if I left this chair without thanking the staff. And I know that you guys have had Robert Price that you've appointed to be the Department Director. And Tim's departure off to Concord was a big change for us, and he'd been a great help to the board for so many years. But Robert couldn't have been a better choice for you guys. I think he's been great in his role working with Tim, but now as the Director. Just fantastic, so.
Great news.
And you know, the team that he has has just been great as well. Thank you for them.
Thank you much, Bob. We appreciate it, and we'll see you next year.
All right, see you next year.
Enjoy the evening.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
This evening, there are no public hearings. Updates from our legislative delegation?
I didn't get any because they're still in session. However, the reason why Nancy's not here is because she's up in Concord at the legislation still. And there's a couple more bills that they're trying to hammer out before their deadlines to do crossover and things. My update for it is that the Continental Boulevard piece, the last I heard, is still off the table in the Senate. Senate President Greg has said no. So it's gonna go to a committee between the House and the Senate. But as far as we know right now, the Senate still is planning on removing Continental Boulevard out of the 10-year plan.
Good. Great. Thanks, Paul.
Until it's over.
Until it's over.
Town manager's report.
Should have just waited actually thirty seconds. The 2024 MHS Spring Concert will premiere this Friday night at 8:00 PM at Merrimack TV app or Cable Channel 8. Thanks to Merrimack High School senior Vanessa Carlson for running one of the three cameras, the concert will replay on Merrimack TV throughout the summer. With the unofficial start of summer, the Parks and Rec Department would like to remind everyone that the town beach at Wasserman Park is for Merrimack residents and their accompanying guests only. Merrimack residents must have a 2024 Town of Merrimack Transit Station sticker or a Wasserman Park parking placard in order to park in the waterfront parking lot, which is down by the theater. Transit Station stickers are available at the Public Works Office at Town Hall and at the Transit Station during normal operating hours. The Wasserman Park placards are available at Parks and Recreation Office at Wasserman Park. And starting on Saturday, June 8th, there will be a weekend attendant at the beach parking lot on Saturdays and Sundays from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Proof of residency is required. The Wasserman Park beach closes daily at dusk. For any questions, please contact Parks and Recreation at 603-882-1046. The National Regional Coordination Council approved by a vote today to offer Merrimack a one-year contract from their state, $5,310, transportation funding of $20,000 to assist with the town's fiscal year, starting on July 1st, 2024, for paratransit for elderly and disabled Merrimack residents for rides within Merrimack and Nashville. This is only a one-year contract to assist for next year's default budget. We'll be bringing this forward for Town Council formal approval, but wanted to let the council know that that happened. So that was the... When we had the discussion, that woman Janet, that was there. She came in and said, "I have $20,000. It's gonna cost you an extra $600 or something of that sort." I'm like, "For an extra three?" She said, "Yep." I said, "Take it." So now our total funding will be roughly $62,000 for the national transit, which is more than last year, but a little less than what they wanted. And finally, fire overtime has... We've been looking at fire overtime for a while, and the Fire Chief has made the decision, due to budget constraints, to start dropping to 10, starting June 1st. So for the month of June, they will be filling positions up to 10. And the 11th position will be not filled to help with the overtime budget. So I just wanted the council to be aware that they are starting to drop 10 as of June 1st.
Now, will that be through till July?
Through July 1st.
Then it's a new year.
Then it's a new year, so it's gonna go back.
Okay, so it'll be about a month.
About a month, basically 30 days. And then we'll see how it goes next year, same thing. Council approved it back in September 23rd of 2021, this plan, that as long as overtime is sufficient and they can staff till 11. But once their overtime and their salary dollars maxes to zero, then they have to drop to 10. And that's what they'll be doing for the month of June. But I wanted the council to be aware.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody have any questions for Paul? Our next, under our business is the consent agenda. It's the final consideration of the recommended changes to Chapter 180, Temporary Sales Locations and Vendors of the Town Code pursuant to Charter Article 5.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull Chapter 180 off the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Didn't have to.
It's not a votable thing. If any one member asks for it to be pulled, it gets pulled off the consent agenda and then discussed.
Thank you. It's rarely...
It's my understanding.
No, I think you're right.
I think you may be.
So anyway.
Do you want to disregard that motion or just leave it as is?
I really don't care.
It's not the same as tabling.
No, we weren't tabling, and I'm not saying we don't want to pass it. I just wanted to talk about it enough without just a straight vote. Last time, we had talked about making just a few changes, especially to items happening on town property and how soon they have to appear before the Town Council. And I was wondering if, Paul, maybe you could go over what change was made in that I think it's on page 6 of 9 in a marked-up copy.
Yep, sorry. Yeah, so if anybody wants to vend on Town Council property, they need to be at least 14 days prior to the event to come in to ask for, to start vending on town property. That's a change. We were talking seven, council and everybody with the summer schedule and things, thinking 14 days would be sufficient. So we moved that to 14 days as requested. With getting it in, they have to have it in 14 days prior to the agenda. So they have to do some planning when they're trying to sell on town property, if they want to sell on town property.
And you added the words, "If there is not a Town Council meeting within those 14 days of submission, the application may be placed in the signed file for the Town Council consideration for approvals."
Correct.
We could approve it without a meeting if necessary.
Right, but we want to really have the meeting at all costs. But if, for some reason, you know, right after July...
One meeting a month schedule in the summertime and things like that. I just wanted to make that as public as we could that that change was made. I don't know if anybody else has anything else they'd like to ask about it, but that was what I wanted to...
Nope, I appreciate it.
That was the most significant change as well.
Right.
So if there's no other discussion, I would move that we accept the Chapter 180 changes into the Merrimack Town Code.
A motion by Tom, can you? Seconded by Nancy, Nancy Harrington, I have to clarify.
Yeah, there's only one Nancy in the poll.
I know there is, but for the record, just to make sure. Excuse me. So if there's no further discussion, call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 600.
Thank you. And both for the vendors, the food truck vendors, June 1st, they'll start be going down. Even though 136 was passed a couple weeks ago, we gave them until June 1st. After June 1st, they'll be going to see Building and Health for all their permits. And in the transition, if somebody brings a permit into Town Hall for food, we're not gonna throw them away. We're just gonna help them in the process and let them know. The three or four food truck vendors that I did talk to liked the changes that have occurred. It's a lot easier just having to deal with the health officer anyways than come into Town Hall and getting everything and then going down there. So it seems like it's a good change.
Oh, good. Okay. All righty.
And Mr. Counselor, if you want to move the committee appointments, I know we have a couple of high schoolers here that need to go home and do some homework.
Oh, yeah.
First, and then we do have the food trucks.
I'm sure they're anxious to go home and do homework.
The rest of us have to be here for the rest of the night, but if you want to move the committee appointments up a little bit, and then the food truck...
If you do that without objection, that's what we'll do. So under new business, item one, it's that council will consider appointing the following individuals to Town Committees pursuant to Charter Article 4, Section 8. Matthew Brown is to be appointed to the Heritage, has been recommended to be appointed to the Heritage Commission alternate member. Mark Williams, Planning Board full member. John Manuelli is being taken off for this evening. He will likely be back on the agenda on the 13th.
13th of June, yes.
And Tyler Borowitz is the Town Center Committee full member, and Rod Buckley, Zoning Board of Adjustment, alternate member.
Mr. Chair, if I can talk a little bit about why we pulled John Manuelli off?
Yes, thank you, Paul.
When we sent out the agenda, we got a phone call from a Planning Board member who's a full member, and they would like to become an alternate member. Well, since we're approving Mark Williams to a full member, that and John Manuelli, if we did that tonight to an alternate member, there are no alternate members' positions open. And the best way to keep it clean was to appoint Mark Williams as a full member. Tomorrow, this member who's a full member of the Planning Board could come in and say, "I would like to take the alternate member position." Move that person down. It creates a full-time member position, which is the position that John Manuelli applied for and was interviewed for. I talked to John. He's happy with becoming a full member. He just, like Mr. Best said, he just wants to serve the community. But we felt that was the cleanest way to do it than to kind of do the shuffle of, "You're an alternate. Wait a second. Why is all of a sudden he's a full member on the Planning Board?" So that's why John is being pulled off.
Thanks, Paul. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do we want to do these individually or all together?
All together is right.
Would like to make a motion? We're doing this all over again.
I would like to make a motion to approve the following appointments to the Town Committee, or to the Town Committees pursuant to Charter Article 4-8. Matthew Brown to the Heritage Commission. Mark Williams to the Planning Board as full member. Tyrell Borowitz to the Town Center Committee, and Rod Buckley to the Zoning Board of Adjustments for alternate member.
And I'll make a second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Mackenzie. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, 600. And this evening, just Matthew Brown is here. The others will be stepping down to the Town Clerk's Office to be sworn in at a later date. So Matt, if you want to come over here with me?
I, Matthew Brown, do solemnly swear and sincerely swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent on me as an alternate member of the Heritage Commission according to the best of my abilities, agreeable to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help me God.
Apparently, never had a pen.
Is there any sworn in on another committee? It's to recognize and acknowledge you have the ethics.
Just to make a point while he's signing. The council just needs to know, it's an assumption, I'm sure, but whenever we interview, we always thank them for their interest in volunteering for the town and how much we appreciate their interest, so. So we thank you, Matthew, for your interest and your volunteering.
Awesome.
And thank you to all the new committee members. It's nice to have some. And I know Tyler Borowitz of the Heritage Commission, he is, for the Town Center Committee, rather, is with the NRPC. So he brings... Did you just mention that? No, he brings a lot to the table. The way you looked at me, I thought you were saying...
No, I just made a point of saying that when we interview, we make a point of thanking them for their interest in volunteering and how much it's appreciated.
Yeah, no, definitely is.
And I didn't have the thing on. Anyway, we appreciate their volunteering.
All righty. Alrighty.
And yes, it's gonna be interesting because Tyrell is a member of the NRPC. He's employed by them, and he works on bike paths and that kinda stuff, so. Be interesting.
He'll bring a lot to the table, yeah.
Good to know.
Oh, wait, we're going back up, Lauren, I.
Yeah, we'll be.
Oh, okay. Uh, we continue out of order for the moment. We've moved to item number two. Council to consider request to vend from a food truck at Martell Field, which is a town-owned property during the men's softball league on Mondays and Wednesday evenings. And Raymond? There, Raymond, hi. Grab a seat right here if you'd like.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Pretty good. Busy growing, man, this one. Hello?
Okay.
It worked.
Sounds good. Um, how does this usually work with, with first timers?
Sure, nope, absolutely, just, you can let the council know what your plans are.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Let you, you know, it just, you know, what you're offering and so on to the.
Okay, yeah, do you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so, this would be our second year. Um, we got approved last year to do the men's softball league from six to nine on Mondays and Wednesdays, so they're, they're keeping the same schedule. Um, we typically get there around like five and leave around nine. Um, we sell Caribbean barbecue and, um.
And you didn't bring any samples?
No, I was saying, I was just saying, I was just saying that earlier, bad rep. It's like, could I at least brought him something?
In our defense, they told us we didn't have to bring anything.
You guys come down on Monday and Wednesday and check us out, you know? But, uh, no, we really enjoy it there. Um, most of them are, are local people that we've grew up with, so it's a good crowd and, you know, looking forward to try to get after it again this year.
So you had a great year last year?
Yeah, 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 it was good. We started a little bit later, um, we caught the season at the beginning of this year. Um, last year was our first year with the truck, um, so we do jobs at Abel Ebenezer. And we're in talks with other places around here to try to, you know.
Yeah, we're looking to expand to, uh, tractor supply currently. Um, they gave us, um, a letter of approval, um, that's kinda why we're here, seeing you guys as well too. Um, so we're looking to expand in the area locally. Um, so I live here, um, in the town, Ramon is, is from Lowell. Um, I was recently from Lowell, I moved up here a few years ago, and, uh, we, we started, um, meal prep service shortly before COVID hit, um, and with, once COVID kinda tailed off, so did the business, and so we decided that we needed a more established, uh, kind of location, if you will. Um, and so we decided to go ahead and pony up some money, buy a truck and fix it up, and we're just trying to expand and, and really, um, try to keep ourselves relevant in the same location. So if we could build a nice clientele that's familiar with us, familiar with the product, and, and we can establish, I, I, that's kind of my goal with the whole establishment of the, the business, so.
Excellent. Paul?
Um, I was just gonna say, guys, if you're going into tractor supply, you need to talk to community development.
Okay.
Cause that's a site that is not approved for selling food. So you just need to talk to our community development department to get approval on that.
Oh, that's, that's good to know, thank you, Paul.
Bob Best, who is here, you probably have to go in front of the, uh, maybe you have to go in front of the planning board to, to show what's going on. But that letter of approv- approval will help, it's just, it's not an approved site.
Right, right.
To sell food at.
That is a good site, though.
Yeah, 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 no, I spoke with Becky and, and she kinda gave me, um, a rough idea of what we had to do, so that's definitely good to know.
And then the, the council, when they, if they do approve this, um, just have to put the times in your motion, six to nine P M. Or six to nine-thirty, so they can kinda clean up, they can stop selling at nine.
Actually, I would, could we extend that to possibly ten o'clock? Uh, I think, um, so, so what we find actually is players don't usually buy before their games, they buy after their games. Um, so, e- if, even if it's like seven to ten, if the three hour is a thing there and, and we'd like to keep it three hours, but if, I would like to propose six to ten, if that's okay with you guys.
There's also like, uh, we ran into, you know, potential rain delays last year too. Um, games run into a little like extra ratings and stuff like that, so, um, those are some other things that we've kinda noticed last year too.
Okay.
The only thing I would say to the council is that if, you know, we don't want people hanging out over there on Monday, Wednesday nights, uh, but ten o'clock seems to be sufficient, uh, if they're out of there by ten, so, uh, people can get out by eleven. You know, and that's really what we want, we want the fields cleared out by eleven. Some games go until ten-thirty, eleven, depending on it, even though they haven't scheduled for an hour each, they, they run over, but, uh, yeah, just to know that ten o'clock is, is the hard, it isn't sell until ten, it's, you guys are cleaned up and out by ten.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good point, and it comes up next year, that's.
Yeah, we'll see what they.
Reapproval, so, yeah, so I, I don't think it'll be a problem, my personal guess right now, but.
If we get complaints, we can bring it back to the council.
Yeah, true.
So, in, in your.
Your experiences last year, there weren't any issues as far as, uh, power or, uh, interference or parking or any of those kinds of things?
No.
Or any neighbors upset about anything?
No, no, we've, um.
Actually, the opposite.
Yeah, the, the, we've been attracting, we, there's a, towards the end of the season, October, uh, they got the football practices going on over there. We've attracted them to come towards where we park, and typically we show, I'm like the first one there, so I, we, we park kind of facing the field. Um, and, you know, we run off a generator or we plug into the, um, like the announcer box, they have an outlet there, and we run it off extensions and stuff like that, so we've, we haven't had any issues with that, and, um, yeah, like I said, I think we've, we've attracted more people, more than, you know, had people kind of complain or anything like that.
That's, that's good to hear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Little concerned about the extensions, just make sure that you're not overpowering your extension cords or something like that. It's real easy to do that, if you go on any distance.
Yeah.
Um, and you're gonna get there when in the, in the evening?
Typically, I arrive, the games start at six-thirty, so I get there around five-forty, like I park there like five-forty-five just to kinda get everything out of the truck, clear up and stuff like that, but we probably don't even like make our first sale till like six-forty-five.
If that.
Yeah, cause the, the guys will, they'll show up, so I guess they have two fields they use. So sometimes the other field, um, I forget what street it's on, it's by the, uh, yeah, okay, so they'll play that game and then they'll make their way to Martell, pretty much, so while that first game is actually happening at Martell, that other crowd's already on their way, but since their game starts around six-thirty, we won't get them to order until after the game, which is, you know, seven o'clock or whatever it may be.
And, and do you guys, um, pack in and pack out as far as trash and things like that are concerned?
Yeah, so there's a dumpster there that we kind of dump our, yeah, we just, you just, we just throw our cans out. There's a bunch of, um, little barrels too, we'll put next to the truck and, you know, they use.
So you make sure the place stays, stays clean.
Yeah, we don't, you know, we can't control everybody else, but what we do is, yeah, we keep a trash in our truck as, as well, and we keep, um, one near the truck also, and then we use the dumpster to dump our trash bags out and stuff like that, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? It's a pleasure.
Like to make a motion to approve a request to vend from a food truck, from Ramon Capana's food truck at Martell Field, which is town-owned property during the men's softball league on Monday and Wednesday evenings between the hours of six to ten P M.
A motion by Andy, seconded by Barbara.
I would just say, I, I like the idea, I like the entrepreneurial, uh, spirit, and I wish you guys luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Hope to see you guys. We'll be at, we'll be at Abel this Friday.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Good place.
Yeah, they're good, they're good people.
Further discussion on this? See none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Six, zero, zero. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys. I'll be looking for you guys.
That's excellent. Yeah, you're gonna be gone soon, so you're gonna do it. All right, we're gonna move back now, Paul?
Yeah.
We're going back to old business in regular order. Item one is, uh, council to discuss the next steps for the Community Choice Aggregation Plan, and Paul is gonna be bringing us up to speed on that.
Yeah, um, I met with our people who helped us put the plan together, Colonial Power and Freedom Energy. And, uh, I said to them, okay, I wanna, step by step, what do I need to do? What do we need to do to get this plan moving forward? Um, first thing is, is that we have not signed an agreement with Colonial Power or Freedom Energy. And, uh, some of the pros and cons of signing the agreement with, with Colonial Power is that if we do, the pro is, if we do sign a contract with them, if we don't like the price we get when we go out to bid, just pull it off the table and we don't go ahead forward with it. They don't make their point zero-zero-one per kilowatt commission until the plan is up and running. Um, we have a lot more, um, leverage with them because we're one-on-one and they're, they work for us, meaning the town of Merrimack. So if we're not happy with the services that are being provided, we can stop the contract and say, we're done, and go out the following year for, for another bid, once the con, it's a yearly contract. Um, the other thing is, is that the Community Choice Aggregation Group, um, Nashville is the biggest member of that committee. And as such, they have the most voting power in that group. You'll be tied in with another thirty-nine or forty communities.
That's the Liberty one?
No, that's the, uh, the Community Choice Aggregation that has, uh, all the municipalities are, uh, some of the municipalities are in, in it.
Okay.
And I think there's forty municipalities in there, and you all have a say and vote. However, Nashville has the biggest say because they have the biggest amount of power.
Most power use.
Most power use. So, um, they, uh, they can write, you, you gotta, if you're against what they're doing, if they wanna go one-hundred percent renewable energy and you wanna do twenty percent, if it's voted in a hundred percent renewable energy, those are the quotes that you're gonna get, a hundred percent. The other thing is that, another pro to go with, um, the Colonial Power and Freedom Group is that, um, the suppliers we're getting are, are Consol- uh, Consolidation and Hess. They're big, um, power companies, but they also, not only are in the power generation business, they're also on the delivery business. So if the delivery, say we sign up for seven cents a kilowatt and the prices jump to fifteen cents a kilowatt, they have something that they're able to offset in, with the power generation portion. They're, they have two individual kind of businesses together to make up their buying power, Hess and Consolidated. Does that make sense to everybody? Versus the group that, uh, in the state right now that's going around, they are trying to be their own supplier and own power generator. And if one price, if they lose their shirt on a contract, they don't have the other area to make it up just yet. Because all the power they're generating is going back out to the communities. So there could be some big blips to make up in the future with that group, whereas ours would be smoothed out with our contracts. Um, so that's another pro to go with them. Um, one of the cons is that there are a lot of communities in the state that are going with this Community Choice, which is a group of municipalities, and it started for that purpose, is for, uh, better rates for municipalities. Freedom and, um, Colonial, there, there are a lot of businesses out of Boston, they, Massachusetts, they, they have the city of Boston. They're just moving into the state of New Hampshire with this. I've had a relationship with Freedom Energy for eleven, twelve years now, with the town of Merrimack. I feel comfortable with that group, I feel comfortable with the business model that they've presented with us. Um, knowing that if I have an issue or a problem, I pick up the phone, I call him, he's very responsive, calls me back right away. Um, they're very proactive with some of our meters. One of our meters dropped off when we were doing the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, upgrade, we took our meter off at the Thornton's Ferry pump station while we were renovating it because we were on bypass. They called us right away and said, hey, your load's dropped, what's going on? Did you lose a meter, is there a problem? And we explained to them, and every month they would say, are you gonna, when, let us know when you get back online, let us know when you get back online. We went back online, we let them know, they're like, great, they, they, they have it. So they're proactive too, looking at our power usage. The other thing is, is that when they see, for the town, when they see the market starting to curve downward, they'll pick up the phone, say, it's time to call. It's time to go out to bid, do you wanna go out to bid? Yep, okay, they go out to bid, and they give me numbers and they'll come back, and sometimes he even says, I wanna take these numbers. No, then, then they're not, they're not a positive, you know, they're not good for the town right now. Wait, we'll wait a little bit longer and go out to bid. So that's my relationship with them, so I've been doing business with them, so I don't have a problem with that. It's just they're trying to get into the state of New Hampshire. That's a con, because they don't have a lot of this side of, of the Community Choice Aggregation in the state of New Hampshire, but they have other, Freedom Energy has other municipalities that they do bid natural gas and, and, uh, electricity out on. So that's the first thing we need to, if we're gonna do anything, we need to sign a contract. Basically, yeah. We need to sign a contract, we could do it on our own too.
I said, ah, there are two options, that's no, that's not an option.
But I'm just saying, that, you know, use ask, I have to, you know, there, there is a third option, but there's a lot of cons with that one.
Yes.
Um, so first thing is, we have to agree, because back in November when we went forward, the council did say we were gonna sign the contract with them. Somebody brought up on a question, so we backed off of signing the contract with them until we can do more research. Since November, the other group has made zero phone calls to me, and they know we've been looking.
The Community Aggregation?
Yes. And they know we've been looking, so, and I've made it clear in the management too, cause I know some of the people, managers are on the board, made it clear that we're going out and zero, zero calls, zero coming to see if Merrimack wants to join.
They don't need us.
Yes. So, once we sign the contract with either party, the next step is that we file the plan with the P U C. That can take up to sixty days, two months for approval. If we go today, say June first, that puts us July, August. Um, once the C C A plan is approved, um, whoever we choose will obtain data from EverSource to create an R F P. They will prepare and issue the R F P, that's usually about thirty to forty-five days, and then pricing to the town council for their approval. Um, town signs agreement with supplier potential launch, fourth quarter, excuse me, two thousand twenty-four. That's if the market conditions are favorable. So if we, we have to, you know, if we wanna sign by June first, we can get this to the residents by fourth quarter. What will happen is if the town signs the contract and lost, launch, um, no less than thirty days. They, uh, they make it a point not to go out more than thirty days in advance, because people kinda forget. They'll do, they'll do their, uh, mailouts, they'll do the public sessions, they'll do postcards, they'll get the website activated. Uh, they'll issue, uh, they'll write the press release for the town that we can issue. Um, when we get the contract price, I told them that the town council is the ones that need to approve the price. So I said, we'll make, we're gonna have to make it so that it's gonna be a Thursday when there's a town council meeting, get the bids in, give me the price, we can come there Thursday night, get the approval, especially for the first contract from the town council to see whether or not you wanna move ahead with that, um, that, that, whatever the price may be, and roll it out to the community. So. Come on, come on down. No, that's fine, I.
And Nancy arrived at seven forty-eight.
No problem. So, and then, um, then also they'll help with the TV show, to produce a TV show, and then the last step is to launch the program. So what I need from the town council tonight is the, allowing me, to authorize me to sign the contract with Colonial Power and Freedom Energy.
So moot. And this, that doesn't mean there's no discussion, but I think we can.
Just making a motion.
Yeah, a motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Tom Kennedy.
Well, I think, well, I would like to hear, I mean, Tom, you were intricately involved with this, and Andy, you have knowledge as well. So I would like to hear your opinions, but we, it doesn't sound like we have too many options, or clearly only two. One advantage sounds like we have a, a history with them, so we can rely on that, and that's a, a thing. And I do like the idea of not being in a, a big group. I feel like we have a little bit more control. I feel like we have a little bit more control and probably it serves us better. We'll, we'll just be a little, whatever, if we're just a small group. We'd have no authority, no power.
If I could, just, excuse me, Tom. There are two options. Either you go with a private entity or you go with the conglomerate.
Correct.
There are other companies out there that, that does do this. Once again, there are a million companies that will come in and say they can do this. It's just.
But what's their record?
Yeah, what's their record? So really, the option is we go with the known commodity or we go to CCA. I just want to clarify that because I don't want somebody at home saying, wait a second, my company does that. No, there are.
We don't want to be a cog in the wheel. We want to be.
Sorry, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, so I, I agree with what Paul has put forward. We worked with Freedom Energy and Colonial Power when we got started with this. They put forth a lot of effort to help us understand it. They put forth a lot of effort, including things like websites for the town and whatnot, which allows us to communicate, allows people to opt in or out and to understand what's going on with the program and stuff like that. So they put a lot of, of background effort into this project. Paul, through the town of Merrimack, has experience working with them, as he indicated. As you suggested, being a personal relationship with them, private relationship with them, gives us a certain level of control and flexibility. And so I'm confident that they could do the job. They, they clearly have done the job in Massachusetts for many communities and we're not the first community in New Hampshire to get involved with them. Because the, the thing we put before the voters was basically a plan that has been approved by the CCA, by the PUC already. And so I don't imagine we'll have any trouble getting that plan approved for Merrimack. So I, I'm quite comfortable going forward with it, the way we've been doing at this point, using Freedom Electric and Colonial Power as, as our, our guides and leadership in this program.
I think we've had good results over the years with our contracts.
We've heard that, yeah. I mean, we've had some really good prices.
For me, that's a, that's a major thing, so.
And another pro is that we can do whatever length we want. If we want to do six months, we can do a six-month contract. If we want to do a year, we do a year. If we want to tie it up for two years, we can do a two-year contract. Whereas the other groups are, it's a six-month at a time. It's like EverSource. They go out six months, again, six months later. So that, that's another pro or a con, depending on.
Depending on what the prices are doing, yes.
For, for me, I mean, if you remember, they, they came in front of the council multiple times to explain how the process works, to educate us. And then when we decided to set up the, the committee, they came to every one of the meetings on their own dime. They didn't have to. They came and walked us through the entire process. And they explained to us exactly what they would do if we hired them for the town to be able to go, you know, and look and see what, you know, their rates and everything are. And that's not empty promises. They're doing that for communities in Massachusetts. That's what they do for all their Massachusetts customers. They're just gonna add us to the list. So it's not like they were here selling, selling us something and trying to get us to buy onto a pipe dream. This is what they do for all of their customers. And through this entire process, I don't know that we've been contacted by any other group to help us walk through this process. So when you think about what kind of customer service you're gonna get from a company, this company, in my opinion, has already proven itself over and over. And I don't, I don't know what the other groups are doing, but, I mean, we wouldn't turn our budget over to Nashua. Why would we jump onto a conglomerate where Nashua has the majority vote and go along with whatever they say? That's just not the way we've done it in the past. I don't know why we'd do it today. So I'm all for Colonial Freedom.
I like the name too.
Well, and it's not that we dislike Nashua. I don't want Nashua to get upset at us, but we don't necessarily want to be driven and controlled by somebody else.
That's right. All right. Would somebody be interested in making a motion?
We're sorry, Don.
Yeah, we did. Get a vote.
That's right.
That's okay.
It's a good thing you're here, Nat. That's all I can say. All right, since we do have a motion, I was just checking on you guys.
There it is.
If no one has anything further, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the council will consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation of one thousand four hundred dollars from resident Jennifer Nigg to the Parks and Recreation Department for the purpose of buying new pickleball nets for the courts at Wasserman Park in memory of her husband David pursuant to RSA three one colon ninety-five B and Charter Article eight, section fifteen.
So moved and with much appreciation and also condolences for the passing of her husband.
Second.
Yep. Motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Barbara. There's no further discussion? Call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, that's seven zero zero. Okay, the last item under new business is the council to consider Colt's, Colt Refining's proposal to terminate and release the King Street easement benefiting the town in order to construct new light, a new light industrial facility pursuant to RSA two thirty-one colon fifty-two and to further accept the new water flowage and snow storage easement being proposed. Do you have Don to see?
Don's here tonight, so that saves me from talking about this.
Is Don gonna be here? He said, I'm pretty sure. You, I was wondering if you were gonna be here. He said, I can handle it if she's not, but I hope she's here.
I'm glad she's here. Basically, Don's bringing this release of the King Street easement and she has a couple of slides for the council and will explain everything and answer all questions.
It didn't get here in time to load, so bear with me.
That's okay.
I'm not gonna say we're ahead of schedule.
No, I'm not gonna say it's only eight o'clock.
We're not gonna say that.
No, we're not gonna say that.
But I am last on the list, as you.
Well, that's because you haven't brought them cookies or.
So before I begin on this, can I make one, one announcement?
No.
I just wanted to say, this is public, the National Public Works Week goes from the nineteenth to the twenty-fifth. And yesterday, we don't take the whole week and celebrate the whole week and do stuff. We only take one day. And I want to acknowledge that we closed all of the offices and I want to thank the public for their patience in allowing us to have our day of training that we really need to be able to do that. So I wanted to thank them. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I also wanted to thank the town council, Paul, Paul and Sharon for coming to the event. It means a lot to the guys to know that you're there and supporting them. I just wanted to thank.
It was a great day.
It was. And we had a wonderful speaker in the morning for a training session and the guys are still talking about it.
Good.
Nice.
They said it was better than a few years ago. I don't know what that meant, but it was good news.
Trust me. It was probably the best one I've had, or been to in the whole eight years I've been here.
Excellent.
It was a very, very well, and he only had a, he found out at three o'clock in the afternoon the day before that he was going to do the presenting because Monday afternoon, the presenter that I had backed out. And I'm in panic, didn't sleep the night. The next night I get a call or in the afternoon, we don't have any air conditioning in the hall. And it's like, oh, and it's gonna be ninety degrees. I'm like, oh my words. So there's another sleepless night, so I'm, I'm still haven't caught up from my nights of sleeplessness. So bear with me. Anyway.
And we do want to congratulate David Martin.
Yes.
For those who weren't there. David Martin is the DPW Employee of the Year. I kind of joked with him a little when he got the award, telling him, tell your daddy doesn't have one up on you anymore. Because his father won the award about two or three years prior to that. So they, they both have won the Employee of the Year. Good, great work ethic on both his father, John O'Leary, and Dave. So I do want to congratulate Dave for, for that award. And that's really voted on by his peers, which is even a better.
It's not by us. It's by, by the peers. And we had the most nominations this year that I think we've ever had. And it was really good and Finley and Paul actually got up and thanked him, handed them their letters to let them know that they had been nominated by their peers. And this has nothing to do with us.
It's a great crew and I, whenever I have an opportunity to speak about them, I always point out how they are very dedicated and committed.
You never see them. They're always behind the scenes. They're always in cleanup.
They always say they make us look good.
They do.
And they're the ones doing the work.
We try. We try. So, yes, I just, I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you for letting me speak for a minute on that. Back to the, project at hand here. So this is Jason Hill. He's from Thomas Moran and he's the one that did the project. I will see, say that Leo Lovellette did all of the review for the project for the town. My only part in this is my usual land surveyor type because we have no other land surveyor. So all of that type of undedications and whatnot comes through my desk so that I can take a review at it and then send it off to the town attorney and that type thing. So we're here tonight for an undedication. And I want to give you just a quick review of where you are. This is the F.E. Everett Turnpike and the Merrimack River over here. So this is in south Merrimack. This is Daniel Webster Highway coming down through here and we have Herrick Road which comes down. This project is on King Street, which is this little tiny street right here. And this little bulb at the end here, which you can see, was never constructed. That, that's the area where we'd like to have undedicated. And it was actually dedicated a number of years ago in an easement to the town. We have all of that documentation. But they, we never constructed it never, and we don't need it basically. So do I have the next plan? Let me, sorry, I'm not, little, there we go. There's the actual plan. Can I make it bigger? Bear with me. This is a different computer. Over here, that one?
That's smaller.
That's my big one. There we go. I was gonna get rid of all of this stuff here. There we go. Okay, that'll, that'll work. So this is King Street. This is the area that's in yellow, which was dedicated years ago. It was never constructed. There is an RSA two thirty-one fifty-two that states that if you haven't constructed it over twenty years, then, you know, it can resort back to the owners and that, that type of thing. So that's basically what we're asking to happen. The owner is King Herrick LLC, if I remember correctly. Okay. And so they are requesting the release of this easement and further requesting the release of any public servitude for the rights of entry in connection with this easement area. If you remember, we've been through this a number of times in the past and this is the proper procedure to be able to go through. So the request before you tonight is to release the easement and extinguish the dedication via New Hampshire RSA two thirty-one colon fifty-two and to further accept the new water flowage and snow storage easement being proposed. That area is this little orange area here and Leo's been through that and they've worked with Jason and this is what we need in place of the big easement area. So that is the request before you tonight. I have sent it off to town attorney. We've been working, but I do not have the final answer in the final. I would like to get your input on this so that when the final documents can be signed, every I is dotted and T is crossed, that, you know, Paul could possibly sign the document at that time, once, once he's finished his review.
Okay. Barbara?
Hi there. So, question for you. So you're going to use it for snow removal, which is a better location than what you had originally proposed to the planning board. My question is, who owns the fence? There's a fence that goes along there with a blockage to keep the traffic out that's coming down King Street. So who owns that fence? I always thought it was the, the company, but now I'm not so sure.
Yeah, my understanding is that the town put it up and.
Either use the mic or turn it off.
Um, yeah, absolutely. My understanding, and this was discussed with Leo in the field, that the town owns it and that they had a key. It's usually closed.
Right.
And then it's obviously to remain, as part of the project, we're, we're not proposing to change it. It's gonna remain intact.
Okay.
And we're gonna actually put a fence around the, the abutting property for privacy. But that piece of chain, it's a chain link fence with a double swing gate and it's locked.
Right.
And I think Leo said that they had a key and they never use it, you know, but it was put in place in case they needed to access that lot. So it would, the answer would be that it would remain, that the town would own the existing chain link fence that is at the end of King Street. And, and I actually looked into the, the creation of the bulb, the, the right of way, the easement, and talked with our survey department and it was actually associated with a subdivision back a couple decades ago for Sklar. And, and we believe is, in order to provide the required frontage for that parcel, there was no frontage that existed other than the stub of King Street. That that was part of the zoning process to enable the, the non-variants, you know? And now as part of the coal refining project, we're actually gonna merge, subsequent to these approvals and the recordation of this extinguishment, we're gonna merge these parcels, three parcels together. There'll be frontage off of King Street and there's no frontage issues or any fire access issues as this was reviewed by the fire department of our site plan.
So, so Don, are we sure that the fence is in good repair at this point, before we release this?
I have not been out to look at that. But if it's our fence, then it's our fence.
If you can bring the other plan.
Yep, I'm coming.
Thank you.
And it's shown on our survey plan, physically located, I believe, on, totally within the right of way of King Street. Although it's very close to the boundary of the property, it's physically located in the King Street right of way versus on the King Herrick LLC property.
So which three are you merging?
The existing coal refining part, yeah. So the subject tract with the bulb on it at the north and then the southern tract, which the, with the existing coal refining facility right there, yes. And then to the west, that parcel, that vacant parcel.
That runs Herrick Street.
That runs Herrick Street will be merged for the new facility. And there'll be a new driveway actually created off of Herrick Street, kind of where the blue easement is. That's an existing drainage easement for the town. So it'll be a new driveway for access in that location.
Okay, yeah, so those easements are for access to that, that property that seems to be locked, so.
So where is the new building that's being built now? Isn't that south of the existing building?
It's north. I have a plan if necessary.
Okay, yeah, it's up there. You're right. I'm sorry.
I didn't have him bring all of that because I think that's beyond our scope.
Oh, you're joining all three. I'm on the board, so.
Yeah. A portion of the new building, and this is why this is such an important asset of the project.
Right, because we had talked about that at one of the last meetings.
Inside of the existing easement, which we're looking to extinguish.
Yep. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Tom?
So, I mean, it looks like the original intent of that bulb, like you said, was to be able to put a subdivision out there and, and it's, it's listed as a turnaround, right, for fire trucks or something that go out there to service those buildings on King Street. How do they turn around now?
They back up.
They, they back off of King Street into Herrick Street?
Yeah. I mean, it's so short, what, a couple, three hundred feet?
No, it's not even three hundred feet.
The fire department's fine with that? I mean, has anybody even asked them? I mean, obviously they're not using the turnaround because it never got constructed, but.
And I believe there's a grade change in there.
Yeah, it drops over ten feet vertically.
Yeah, there's a.
Off the end of King Street, it falls into the subject property. So you'd have to raise the grade up ten to fifteen feet or so to extend the road. I know that the fire department reviewed our full plan proposal, which always has included the extinguishment of that easement. They've reviewed the plans multiple times, commented on the plans multiple times. They have never raised an issue of access. The only thing that they did raise with access is that they wanted the new driveway off of Herrick Street to have the radii, you know, have generous radii so they can easily access the site. And he also, who was, he was the Captain Manwelly, or his successor, reviewed, you know, the, the turning around the facility so that they could enter and leave without having to back up the facility. So by that review process, thorough review process, I would contend that, you know, there was no issues raised with the proposal since that was always a part of the proposal from a year ago to today.
Yeah. So you're, you're putting in a, a snow area, snow storage area, but you have a fence across there. So you're putting in a snow area, snow storage area, but you have a fence across there, Don. Do you use that at all?
It's more for drainage. Everything runs down there because it's, it drops off there.
Because it drops off and goes off towards-
And that's why it was never constructed. I mean, to construct that, bringing it up, like you said, 10 feet, it's-
Right.
I can't see it being used. But for snow, yes. If, you know, the gates weren't there, you know, that's where the snow could go.
They would push snow there. I mean, I didn't know there were gates there, so I assumed that that's where they've been pushing snow all this time.
To be honest with you, I haven't gone out, I looked at paper, you know.
Okay.
And we actually put in a drain line on our site within this easement, you know, for, a catch basin, you know, to capture that drainage, and we're actually treating it. So it's an improvement over what's there, because the existing, that runoff, which has chlorides and such in it, it's just flowing, you know, into the ground.
Into the ground or into the river.
And now we're going to have treatment of that.
Well, it can't get faster.
The sands will end up being captured, so it'll improve the water quality in that, you know, vicinity per se.
Yeah, that's a good thing. I was just trying to understand the value and benefits of all these things. So thank you.
Everything we do is MS4, believe me, in one way or another. I said that today. It's like, everything we do.
Okay.
Actually, it's a better location for the snow storage than where it was originally because of, just because of the MS4, if I remember correctly.
Where was it originally?
It gives you the, it gives the town the benefit of having access to additional, you know, land to push snow rather than to have to remove it, you know, from that area. And the Colt Refining, King Herrick has no contention of that use.
So you're talking about fencing in that orange square?
It may never be used, yeah.
You're talking about fencing in that orange square on your property?
Uh, no, it'll be open. The intent is to keep the existing chain-linked fence, which is, I think, a four-foot-high chain-linked fence, which is, we're maintaining is owned by the town, and they have access to the gate, to the existing padlock. And then we would just, it's just an open area with no landscaping.
Right.
And it's stabilized. I think we have some stone, and we have the drainage catch basin, just to make sure that it's being, we're not going to have erosion problems in that area.
Are you, are you building out in that area? Just out of curiosity.
No, it's going to be just a slope with the drain in it.
All right, thank you.
One of their buildings is in the back, this back property.
Right.
Yeah, we're building within the existing easement, the bulb area, but not within the proposed new easement.
Obviously, yeah, okay. That's what I was curious, I don't, I was really asking if you were going to be building in that area where the easement, the existing easement is.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Nothing further? It's a pleasure, the council.
Do we have a specific wording that we need for this motion, or just?
Terminate, release what it says?
Town council, I move to terminate and release the King Street easement benefiting the town in order to construct new light industrial facility pursuant to RSA 23152 and further accept a new water flowage and snow storage easement being proposed.
So moved.
And to release the-
And to allow?
And to further request releasing the public servitude for the rights of entry in connection with the easement area, if there are any. There could be, we need to release those also.
That as well, and to have the town manager sign any and all necessary documents.
How's that? We put it all together? So moved.
Is that, is that good, though? That's good with that.
Yeah. Pull the three pieces.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, because that was, it was a lot to put in.
The attorneys are reviewing this.
Yeah.
We would now, they're going to have that one.
They're reviewing the easement documents to make sure that everything's legal. The attorneys are, the attorneys, the attorneys told us, yes, what the attorneys are reviewing is the language in the easement document to protect both ourselves and Colt Refining.
Thank you. I just had a question about whether our attorneys had reviewed this before we voted on it, because I-
So what usually happens is I go through the documents, having read documents for the last 40 years. I go through them, I look at them, I give suggestions back, and then when they come back and I think I'm happy with them, then I send them to the attorney at that point. And then he takes his red pen and goes through and does his job, too. So, yes, they're well-vetted, which I've seen some in the past that make me cringe.
And really, the attorney, what we're doing here tonight with approving this, if the council does, is that until the attorney gives me a signed document saying, "This is your document to release the easement," to get the easement, we're not going to do anything. Because until it's registered with Hillsborough County, we still own the bulb.
Yeah, we'll just allow it to go forward.
And I am extremely picky on-
And that's what your motion said, is we're allowing this to move forward pending attorney approval?
So, let's, let's read this for the minute taker one more time.
Thank you, Paul.
Good idea, all right? So we're going to move to terminate and release the King Street easement benefiting the town in order to construct a new light industrial facility pursuant to RSA 231:52 and further accept the new water flowage and snow storage easement being proposed.
And?
And, Don?
Requesting the release of any public servitude for the rights of entry in connection with the easement area.
And to allow the town manager to sign all necessary documents after review and approval by town legal counsel.
So what? That's what Barbara removed and Nancy has seconded. Thank you.
That was very clear. I appreciate it, and I think that was a good move for the minute takers.
It was a group effort.
It was a group effort. Oftentimes, when it becomes wordy like that, we have the recommended motion just to keep it, you know, so everything's included. But that's good, we pulled it off.
I will do better.
I did notice on this GIS that it looks like toll booths are still there, so. But anyhow, that's another story.
That's our 2019 GIS. Pulled that up tonight, so.
So if there's no further discussion on the motion, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, that's seven zero zero.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Don, as well.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, the approval of the May 9th, 2024 minutes.
Do any changes first, right?
Just for the record, can we put a moment of silence for the passing of Lon Woods on X and such date? I don't remember what date he actually passed, but just, I mean, just, just for Lon Woods. Doesn't really say why we're doing a moment of silence, and in six months, well, three or four years from now, somebody cares. It would just look better if we could put his date of passing on there.
Sixteenth.
It was the 16th of April, it was the day we were in Concord. So, yes, it was a Tuesday.
So, okay, thank you.
Good addition. I move to approve the minutes. Town council meeting minutes, Thursday, May 9th, as printed and-
Discussed.
Discussed.
Or something.
And changed or whatever.
Second.
I think we got a second by Nancy Murphy. A motion by Nancy Harrington, second by Nancy Murphy.
Oh.
That's all right. I just-
That's fine.
She whispered. Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained, seven zero zero. Comments from the press, public, standing on here, comments from the council?
Barbara, you will be missed. I mean, I know we said it earlier, but we certainly appreciate all the work and effort you've put into the council over the years, and thank you. Thank you for all that, and good luck with your move, and enjoy yourself in Florida.